I'm Ron Carroll, owner of Emporium 406, where you'll find unique vintage and contemporary goods. Products like autographed celebrity memorabilia and framed vintage posters. We also have a magic shop, where you'll find the new children's book Marvelous Marvin's Magical Moment. At Emporium 406, you'll also find a full line of Made in Montana products and home decor. Items such as painted windows, barn wood and tin goods, fleece blankets, designer pillows, jewelry, small furniture and so much more. Emporium 406 at 23 South Idaho Street, Dylan's premier Made in Montana gift store. To celebrate our grand opening in downtown Dylan, we are having a spooky special in October. Want to become a livestream sponsor? At a great price, give us a call at 406-660-7041. I'm Ron Carroll, owner of Emporium 406, where you'll find unique vintage and contemporary goods. Products like autographed celebrity memorabilia and framed vintage posters. We also have a magic shop, where you'll find the new children's book Marvelous Marvin's Magical Moment. At Emporium 406, you'll also find a full line of Made in Montana products and home decor. Items such as painted windows, barn wood and tin goods, fleece blankets, designer pillows, jewelry, small furniture and so much more. Emporium 406 at 23 South Idaho Street, Dylan's premier Made in Montana gift store. To celebrate our grand opening in downtown Dylan, we are having a spooky special in October. Want to become a livestream sponsor? At a great price, give us a call at 406-660-
Okay, I've called regular meeting of City Council for October 7th of 2020. Your order, Dan, lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is approved minutes.
Look to approve.
Second.
Which ones?
All of them. It's been moved by Russ, seconded by Bill, right?
Bill, Don.
Dan, Don. Don, Don. So approve the minutes, discussion.
Hey Mike?
Yes?
I got a text from Donnie saying Zoom is saying the host has another meeting in progress, but he can't get on.
This is the only one I know.
May we pause for a second? Move pause. Who are you?
That's true.
Okay, ready for me to ask?
I suppose. Can Donnie hear us?
Unfortunately, yes.
Okay, we're back and going again. Any questions to the minutes?
Call for the question.
Questions been called for to approve the September 2nd, 2020 rate of meeting minutes and the September 16th, 2020 rate of meeting minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. I take that as unanimous. Okay, next item is just a petition that I got from Senator Tester. He graduated Nassau and being part of City of Dylan mainly for the tree board, being part of the Tree City USA. And it says there's only about thirty-five or a hundred of them in the United States, so that's an honor. Okay. We'll go to the mayor's report. And the first item is appoint Aaron Bowman to position patrol officer in City of Dylan. Doubles. Can be definite motion. Want to introduce yourself?
Sure, my name's Aaron Bowman. It's an honor to be here, thank you everyone. Really excited for what's to come, so thank you again.
Council have any questions for me? Okay, yeah, sorry, Donnie.
I just want to let the council know and the public know. We really got lucky. We were able to get Deputy Law Officer Bowman. He's someone that I watched kind of grow with last couple of years as a sheriff's deputy. And I can say unveritably that he is the kind of person the community needs. He fits in very well, he's extremely quiet, he's very nice. He knows what it is to be a peace officer. Not just a law enforcement, a law enforcer, but a peace officer. And I'm really glad to have him. You know, you wouldn't know, he looks really young, but under that master, he's got a really, really manly hair. So he won't look so young. Just kidding there. But we have a good guy with us and I'm very happy that he's a part of our team.
Thank you, Donnie.
Call for the question.
I was wondering if you had a thought, Mr. Bowman, I'd like to very interested to know you.
Sure. Please have a good one, you do admire. Sure. How about that, there we go, okay. No, thank you again for everyone from Boise, Idaho. I came here about four years ago to go to the college university. Did about a year and a half there and kind of, you know, made so I was ready to move on with my career and start my career. And, you know, law enforcement is something I've always wanted to do and grown up on fourth generation law enforcement, so wouldn't want to be doing anything else, so. I'm just, I'm excited to be here. Worked patrol for the sheriff's office here for about two years. I did about nine months in the jail, working in the jail of Beaverton County as well. Gained a lot of good experience through that and just looking forward to move my career and my career with the city. And I'm excited for all the things to come, so thank you again.
Sorry about that, no disrespect. Any other questions? Call those opposed, say nay. I take that as unanimous. Now I have to swear in. Support, protect and defend.
Support, protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Montana.
The Constitution of the State of Montana.
And that I will discharge the duties.
I'll discharge the duties.
So my office with fidelity.
With my office with fidelity.
So help me go.
So help me go. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations. As you know, all the streets could leave if they want, or they can stay for the fun. I know Eric is having the fun once. Okay, next item is the resolution of City Council, City of Dylan, revising the request of distribution of bridge and road safety accountability program funds for 2021.
Second.
And whoever's seconded again. What we're doing here is you guys have voted on this a couple of months ago, but we changed the numbers for the budget. And so when I apply for the money, you gotta send them this resolution that's signed and also the budget. And so I just needed to get the numbers to match. That's all that was changed was the total amount that was gonna be paid. Everything else is the same.
Mr. Mayor, I have a few questions.
Yes?
Was there a delay in getting them up this evening?
Well, I had a problem with it. Is somebody set it up for me and I just started it and I think it was set up to be on the wrong kind of room. So I canceled that one and started it back up again, allowing everybody on the original number.
Okay, would you please let the record show that I attempted to join the meeting three times promptly before the meeting? And finally at 7:10, when the officer was being interviewed, I was, someone made a setting change on Zoom that I didn't let me in.
Okay, yeah, some more. Any other discussions?
Call for the question.
Questions been called for to approve the resolution of City Council, the City of Dylan, of City Council, the City of Dylan. I take that as unanimous, Beaverton County High School. This, oh, sorry. This came from the streets and we finally got a description. City Attorney helped working on that and we got the description on the back with the little diagram showing the one dollar. Okay.
That's why I put the question, that's why I put the question marks in there.
Well, I propose you set that at ten dollars. Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I didn't follow this project in the Streets Committee and I was just wondering, first and foremost, why the lease? Why are we not giving this or selling it to the high school district? It's a long-term lease. So I think that it seems to be in a discussion that's come out that is the hope that it's a long-term lease agreement. So why lease?
The lease was put in to ascertain our ownership position. So we open on the ground and there may be a future use for it the city may have. This allows us that latitude to move it. If we need to, we can cancel the lease and use it for whatever's appropriate. But the second problem is, is by the time trying to get an appraisal of it to figure out what it's worth, might be challenging and then I'm not exactly sure what sale comparables you have for an improved parking lot.
Okay, so the two reasons for why lease are future use.
By the city.
And it would be harder to get an appraisal. We might have to go out of town to get an appraiser or?
No, there aren't any comparable appraisals. As Mr. McGeez, if you're gonna attest to, there's no land sales that are comparable to it.
So we might have to look at land sales outside of Dylan.
I'm not sure how that works, Mr. McGeez, you'd have to answer that, I don't know.
On a rare occasion, it is, but you might have to go to the market, or at least our local market, to establish a plan that a parking lot or abandoned street sells for X percent more than raw land.
So you might have to go outside the city?
Right, you know, to establish a plan because it would be basically a forecasting appraisal.
The third thing you're married to too, so that it didn't cost the high school any money this week. Their budget was tight too. This is a nice, cost-effective way for them as well.
So it's to save money to the potential seller, buyer. Thank you, I, this is my only question.
Jim, just one quick comment. I just wanted to thank Nick Buchek for preparing the diagram with the Art G I S software that the City Council, that he's got his own. It was very helpful.
Call for the question as amended. Questions was called for as amended to approve or to approve the lease agreement as amended between the City of Dylan and Beaverton County High School. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. I take that as unanimous. Thank you. Next items, I have a request to put in here about, you know, a picture that came from Jack Eddie, that he would like to have Montana Street painted. He was willing or have a group of people together, get a fundraiser sign to help pay for the paint, maybe you link in paint for him. Sort of up to the council, do you guys want to do it? A blue line down Montana between Helena and Reader. Mainly to show support of the police.
Move to approve, second.
Mr. Mayor?
Just a second, just a second. Just a second, it's been moved by Bill, seconded by Dan. Okay, oh, you have this question.
Parliamentary question, shouldn't this be assigned to the streets and alley committee?
Well, we could, we could bring it here too. I got it in a couple of days, you can say I received it on October 2nd. And that was too late for this month. And they're kind of hoping instead of having to wait until next spring that we might have to run out there fast and paint it. That was the only reason, not to put any disrespect to the council.
I think we should just decide it here.
That's why I put it on the agenda under the mayor's. Some of you guys can have a discussion and then decide.
I'm assuming they're gonna buy the paint, we're gonna put it together with the spray paint machine.
That would be what I'm understanding. That's what he said on about the last, the last big paragraph. Mr. Mayor, does putting a blue line down between the yellow lines, does that violate any traffic codes? I would be the answer by Donnie. Chief, what do you say?
Well, I have to look and see exactly where they were gonna put it, I guess. And I had nothing to do with this, none of my guys had anything to do with this either and it's really nice that they're supporting us and stuff. That's one question I had too, I'd kind of have to know where it was at. I don't think it would, but is it, you know, something probably to look at?
Well, the plan was, is he's gonna go down Montana, south, mainly south. There's one part of north, but it goes from Helena to Reader. On Montana, and he would paint a big yellow line down the middle and then a blue line in the middle of it. So it would look down, it would look like a striped line, yellow, blue, yellow.
Yeah, there'd be no problem if that be real. I mean, because it's, it's a no pass signal anyway, so that's what the lady would, would. If we were doing it so people wouldn't pass on there, it'd be the same thing. It was blue in the middle, so I think we're good.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I want to commend Mr. Eddie for this lovely suggestion. I mean, I think that it's narrative and everything. I, the only two concerns I have are, number one, the city has streets repairs and maintenance, things that need to be done that have been kind of on the list for years that the taxpayers would like to have done. They are mainly repairing potholes, repairing curbs and gutters. I know in my neighborhood, there's four curbs and gutters that have been out for more than, one of them's been out for two and a half years. And then every time it rains, the water comes up over the curb and it causes flooding and this, and it's been on, Mr. Hazelbaker has had it on the list for more than two years. So I'm concerned about that, that, you know, the city workers are already overstressed trying to get normal work done. So that's one concern. And the other concern is it seems to me, I mean, I would love to figure out a great thing to do to support the blue. And I don't know if that's to take out one of those great big signs when you, when you're coming into town or to put a big sign at either end that say Dylan supports, we support our law enforcement or something. I agree that that should be done because that's a fine statement to make to the world. I guess I'm just not sure that this is the statement of blue line down Montana Street. I almost think it would be nicer to the police to redo the crosswalks all over town that need to be painted. You know, that talks about safety and that's what the police are all about. So I think that this project needs to be talked over a bit more. Thank you.
Well, let me answer two concerns, or I'll try to concern. Number one is I thought we did paint all our, I'm trying to answer number two first. I thought all the crosswalks were painted this year.
The ones in the downtown area and around the schools?
Around the schools, right?
Yes.
And I don't have any mechanism at all to do curb and gutter. And the money, we don't have much money to do it. We can do some. You know, it's, I priced out, it's, at least it was around twenty-five to twenty-seven dollars a linear foot to do curb and gutter because I have to hire a contractor to come in and do it. We don't have the mechanism to do it. Because you gotta get, quite understand, you gotta get a mold, you know, kind of thing. Mr. Hen might have a better one. It's like a mold that you get set up and then you pour the concrete in, and I don't have it.
Right. And one of the things, I'll use Idaho streets as example because I see the, it's the double yellow lines. All it would be is the crew would fire up the paint machine, put blue paint in it and they'd walk the length of the street or the length of, and that would be their time. That's something we could do maybe Friday. And then we could estimate how much paint we used and then based upon the way we paint, we could choose some of them. But it takes less than the time, probably less than an hour to do.
And right now, I don't usually do this, but if this passes, I'll donate fifty bucks for paint. If you wanted supporters in that fundraising, I'll throw fifty. I have no clue how much it's gonna cost. We'll calculate for the paint, but I'll throw fifty and so that should help their support. If it passes, that is. Any other discussions on it, Jim? Oh, Jim, sorry.
Yes, I, this is where I guess I will be that annoying city attorney. But I do feel like me, me too, it's my duty to point out that, you know, it's possible that there are other people in the community who have a different view or using taxpayer money to paint a blue line. Where does it end? Do we have to use taxpayer money to paint Black Lives Matter or where does it end? Double yellow lines, you know, whether we're liberal, conservative, independent, we have to stay on that, you know, the right side of those lines. And I guess, I just worry about where this could go. Just something to think about, that's all.
Well, it takes an hour. You could use my fifty bucks for labor and so the labor will be paid for. I will donate that and then I'll have to come up with the paint.
Mr. Gold?
Now you might have to check, I'm not sure if that's on.
Or so.
Here, he's got it.
Okay. Mike Brady, don't turn, he's still on, he said a quick question. Is that State Highway that they're talking about? That portion, I don't think, yeah.
No, it is not State Highway.
And would there be any questions about putting a sign up on State Highway like that?
More than likely, State Highway, so that would, that would handle that. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, I think that it would be good support for our police department and everybody has an opinion and we're just showing our support for the police department. I, you know, if you have a problem with it, fine. You know, we all disagree on certain things. So I don't think that it's a big deal, especially when the mayor or somebody else is contributing money towards the labor to have it done and they're gonna pay for the paint. What's it gonna hurt?
Call for the question. Questions been called for to approve the request to paint Montana Street from Helena Street to Reader Street with a blue line down the center divider surrounded by yellow lines.
One question, that was at no cost to the city?
Yes. Labor will be covered and they will cover the paint.
Now who's gonna cover the labor?
I will, I'll throw fifty in. I'll have to calculate, we'll have to first have them do it, see how long it takes. But if it just takes an hour, I think fifty would be pretty close to cover the cost of those two individuals.
I'm sure the money will come up whatever it takes to pay for it.
I think it's close to fifty, if it's a little more, I might even throw a little more in. Let me just say right now, I'll pay for the labor. Shouldn't have said that, I gotta, I'm gonna calculate it.
Well, we got him now, so why are we down there?
Questions, wait for me, hold on.
That's right. Further request to paint Montana Street from Helena Street to Reader Street with a blue line down the center divider that's surrounded by yellow lines. All those in favor say aye. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? I take that as unanimous. Thank you, guys. Okay, Matt Kenworthy called me Saturday, saying he was heading out town Sunday and he forgot to tell us. So he's requesting that you guys would excuse him from being out of state from October fourth, which was Sunday, until October fifteenth, Thursday, next Thursday, not tomorrow, but the Thursday after. We'll try to accept. Second. It's been moved by Russ, seconded by Don, discussion.
Call for the question.
Question's been called for to excuse Matt Kenworthy from October fourth, 2020, to October fifteenth, 2020, to leave the state. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? I take that as unanimous. Okay, next item, the force officers and forces of the city library quarter. We need the ones here so we can pass on, I think. Matt's gone, I don't see Lori. Somebody's phone ringing. Oh, it's one of them up there. Okay, and then let's move, if you have no problem, let's move the city court you requested tonight to be moved forward. So let's move number eight up to number two, if you have no problem with it.
I got to answer.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I am here with my August 2020 report, and I am here to field any questions that anyone may have.
I'll move to accept, so I got this 2020 report.
It's been moved by Bill, seconded by Russ, to accept, discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so Judge, am I understanding correctly that you had this month thirty-one cases and forty-four citations within those cases?
That is correct.
And so we are continuing on our steady progress of lawfulness within the city, correct?
Well, it does appear to be that we are having slightly fewer citations, thus slightly fewer cases than we have had in years past. And the facts that I'm basing this on are on page two in the new cases by month graph. This is the graph that is color quoted by year, and that's what I'm making my statement based on. We have thirty-one cases this year, and two years ago, though, we had a high of sixty-seven cases in the month of August.
Sorry to inform you, our felonies are way up there, Joe.
Your what?
Our felonies are way up. I saw you the woo-hoo, but our felonies are way up.
Yeah, these are just traffic or misdemeanors.
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. And the occasional civil case as well, but.
Yeah, sorry.
No, of course.
Call for the question.
Question's been called for to accept August 2020 court report. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay? Take that as unanimous.
Well, thank you everyone for your time. I look forward to seeing you all in a few short weeks. Have a good one.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go back. Attorney, Mr. Gold?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll just give a brief report tonight. The, I received word late today that the Philistines, there is a hearing on motion for summary judgment that's taking place, I think it's ten o'clock on Friday, October sixteenth, in Helena, with Judge Penn. I'll reach out tomorrow with counsel assigned to that to see whether or not there's anything we need to do as far as witnesses or whatnot, I don't know. The criminal workers proceeding normally, there's certainly, I guess I'll just make this observation, it does appear that there's a lot of people having now health issues, I don't know if it's from pandemic related, but it seems like that's sort of a tangential theme on criminal things that I've seen that day. I'm working on a development agreement, a sketch for a development agreement for, between the city and Mr. Lemon, for improving some existing roads that have never been built. And today was the first session of the League of Towns and Cities training, that's being done virtually. I'm happy to report that it went fairly smoothly. I do miss some of the networking that's not available. Two sessions today were on human resources and a diversity and inclusion presentation by someone from the National League of Cities. And that virtual conference will continue tomorrow and Friday.
Any questions for the city attorney? Okay, thank you. Final board, Mr. Hen. We haven't had a meeting, but we did meet with the engineering firm that's going to be doing our next big growth plan for us. We started out, we started that down the pipe, so it's kind of, thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry, capital improvement plan. Any questions? Okay, thank you. Next one's zoning, about agreement.
Okay, before you, you'll find our meeting minutes from September eighth, 2020. I'm asked for your approval.
Will be approved.
Second. It's been moved by Bill, seconded by Russ, discussion. Questions we call for to accept the September eighth, 2020 meeting minutes of the zoning board, or zoning commission, actually. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay?
Things were kind of slow that day, we'd been busy zoning, and we're still discussing on some of the new zones, and we hope to have a hearing September, next over, next Tuesday.
Six thirty, or thirteen?
Six Tuesday.
Six Tuesday?
Yeah.
Thirteen.
Six thirteen. So what will be available zoom for people who want to come is to discuss a new area or a new zoning we'll be looking into for, I hope numbers called, but it was for a new, what you call it?
Agricultural business.
Business.
Box store.
Box store, there we go. There's about fifteen different names going on to that, but anyway, that's what the hearing is for. Hope to get enough input on. And again, for just verification, it is not for a particular area.
Correct.
Within the city limits. It's just a new classification of a proposed zone.
And then they're doing a hearing and all that to attach it to someplace if they sort of.
Yeah, if it goes forward from here.
Yeah, yeah, correct.
Mr. Mayor, I was wondering if the zoning commission, the two members that are here and the rest of the council want to revisit that. We have fifty-nine active cases today in the city, and they've been going up on a daily basis. And the open hearing, or the public hearing is this coming Tuesday night at six thirty. We're here in a room with the majority of the people without masks, or maybe it's fifty percent that would be good, or hit fifty percent of people with masks. I don't know. Do we want to move this, I mean, wouldn't it, we hope the city to move this, that public hearing to a larger venue?
We'd have to cancel it and do it all over again. We cannot move it, because it's already been published as a specific location. So we would be violation of law if we were to move it to without proper notification.
Well, it's already been, it's been canceled, been redone and redone and redone four times, so we can't do that.
This hasn't been, this is the first time for this, isn't it?
No, but I have the minutes all marked from 2016 on. This is the fourth.
Okay, yeah, we're moving on from, this is.
If anybody's nervous about any of it, they can only zoom in. The hearing will be zoomed to.
And they also have the option to write their statements, give written statements.
That's correct.
For presentation, and I've already seen one from a gentleman that lives in that area.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a couple of facts as far as expounding on what Mary Jo said. The active cases in Beaverhead County hit a new daily additional high of seventeen cases today. The state hit a new high of seven hundred and thirty-three cases. We had three more deaths in the state and countless more hospitalizations. So I just wanted to introduce those facts in addition to the ones that Mary Jo cited. In addition, as far as the public attending the meeting by Zoom, Mr. Mayor, that would be very difficult, because I tried three times to attend this meeting as a councilman, and I couldn't get in. And that's unacceptable. And so the public, as invited by you and everyone else to participate by Zoom, would have a similar experience in terms of trying to participate in this meeting. Thank you.
Can I break in there? Because I also had difficulty getting in, and it took about thirty seconds to get in that, so it was really very tricky.
It took three attempts on my part, and the third attempt, it's the host would let me in, to wait for the host to let me in, and I waited tremendously until finally someone came on camera and clicked something, and it finally worked. And that was at the point that the officer was being interviewed.
What I'd like to, this is a, it would be a public hearing that starts at six thirty, and you have that timeframe from when the chairman would start the meeting until he closes the meeting, to have, to be able to make your statement. So in this case, if you were not able to get in right at six thirty, and if.
I didn't say six thirty. I said seven o'clock.
Okay, but I'm talking about the meeting Tuesday night. I'm moving on from tonight's meeting.
Okay, well.
So I'm talking about, I'm talking about the meeting Tuesday night, that if you weren't able to get in right at six thirty, you still have plenty of time to make your public statement. Well, I don't mean you, but I mean whoever's trying to make their statement. So if you can't get in right at six thirty, it is not a major issue on Tuesday.
Well, I consider it an extremely major issue, Mr. Hazelbaker. I take exception to that by law. This is a public meeting, and if we are allowing the public to attend by Zoom, we can't discriminate against the public by saying that, well, we'll get around to let you in the meeting whenever we feel like. We have to let you in, we have to let the public in, we have to let the council members in, staff that wants to participate by Zoom, we have to let them in at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, but what happens if somebody comes in late and wants to give their comment at six forty-five? This really don't have nothing to do with zoning issue. That's true. If the chairman of the zoning board decides he wants to cancel the meeting, that is up to the chairman, that's not up to the board member's president or the council. So I think what we need is Mr. Hazelbaker to get a hold of the chairman, to express the concern for what's going on. If he decides he wants to cancel the meeting, we will cancel the meeting. If he wants to continue to hold the meeting, we will hold the meeting as scheduled through Zoom here, and we will try our best to make Zoom work. That's all we can do.
I agree.
And I believe that because of the four prior, actually where public hearings were held, and they weren't noticed correctly, and so they had to be redone, and cancellations, and when minutes weren't kept, and, I mean, there are all kinds of reasons of why this project seems to drag on and on and on. It is in the best interest of everybody to keep it moving forward, although I wish we had a larger venue. I think that, yeah. Good?
Now, on the subject of total active cases, I put in my disapproval of what they've done. They're actually double hitting, they're counting the university. Before, it's supposed to only be residents of Beaverhead County. Now they're counting every student up there that catches it, and that is not right. They've changed it to extreme.
They are members of this community, and from a public health perspective, they can, they can present a problem for public health in terms of community spread of the disease. They're no different from you or I or anyone else.
So with that being said, before I call for the question, the zoning commission will make a recommendation of that hearing. It is required to have a second hearing behalf of the city council. At that time, perhaps a larger venue. This is twofold, folks. Please note that. And with that being said, call for the question.
There was none, this is just telling us that we're having a public hearing.
So there was no motion or anything, we're just holding.
The game is report, yes? The game is report, yes?
Yeah, yeah. So we're just moving on. Thank you.
Problem of order. Director of Operations, Mr. Hazelbaker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just some things in general, departments, blowing out the systems, getting them ready for winter, they've been working on that this week. Street and alley guys have been working on a new storm drain to intersection of Virginia and North Pacific in Kentucky. That'll be a great improvement to help when we have major rainstorms. The water department has been working on an ISO, which is for the insurance services office, and working very closely with Chief Klosi. It's a service that deals with insurance and for the community and lowers insurance rates for protection, for fire protection. One thing they did today was flow testing. I think he told me twelve, twelve different fire hydrants, they tested for flow, and everything looked fine. So we're looking forward to that report and working with Chief Klosi to get that finalized. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Hazelbaker. Thank you. Police chief, Mr. Gatterson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it. I'd ask the council to approve the August 2020 activity report as well under the Labor Day statistics in 2020.
Remove it for second. Russ, make the motion. And who's second? Dan's second. Discussion. And that's for both reports, right?
Correct.
Call for the question. Questions we called for to approve the August 2020 Officer Activity Report and the Labor Day 2020 Statistics Report. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? They take that as unanimous? Chief, anything else you want to say on it?
Um, yeah, just a couple of things. We're, we're seeing definitely an increase in overtime due to COVID as well as, uh, increased felony case load. Um, we've been swamped and also some officers trying to take some vacation time now that Labor Day is over and we're trying to get it to, um, you know, get that, that filled out. And then also, I had, I was in a meeting earlier today, I couldn't get in, it was actually 3:00 this afternoon, so I couldn't get in. But, um, there was some discussion about different things, um, with the numbers, with the COVID numbers and all that. I don't want to get into that because it always seems to cause a, cause a stir. But with that being said too, I think Dr. Moore was gonna, uh, maybe present some stuff and try to get on the next meeting for the council just to, um, give a heads up with that. It was just more, more information stuff than anything. But other than that, I, I think we're doing really good. I think Aaron can start, you know, relatively soon. He's, he knows everything as far as the computer system. He's been to the academies. He's good to go after he's, you know, got some, has some computer issues that we'll have to deal with as far as, um, how we report, do our reporting and stuff like that. Uh, that'll, that'll sure be a shot in the arm for us. So, yeah, I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that you have.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, on the Officer Activity Report, I just want to follow up on a, on a, a question that you answered before, uh, Chief Giverson. On the felony violations, um, there's listed five. Are those, um, you know, one person can have, be arrested with three felony or four felony or five, you know, many violations? Or are these felony cases?
These would be felony, these would be felony cases.
Okay. So they represent, uh, separate and distinct individuals? All five of them?
Correct.
Great.
Yeah, and, and some of those too, it's unfortunate, you know, when we follow these, they, one that happened this month may actually be reported next month or two months from now depending on when the arrest happens because we'll do a follow, our full thorough investigation that will be initiated by an officer, not, you know, not called in. A lot of felonies aren't called in because they have to investigate and form a complaint. So it's kind of a, it's kind of a moving scale, so to speak. So we could, I mean, I think we had more than five, uh, in August and we'll have more except September, but, um, we, we have more than that already this month. So it's kind of a moving scales when they get, actually get reported.
I saw that in this month's court report even that there was, it looked to me like there was one case that at the end of the month, uh, maybe that case had like three citations hooked to it, but by the second of the next month, it had four citations hooked to it. So I could see how that happens, yeah.
Yeah, and, yeah, felonies are interesting in the fact and how they're different in misdemeanors. You give somebody a citation for a, for a misdemeanor, but that's, you can't do that without, obviously, a, a felony is more, you have to go through the courses, you get warrants, uh, you know, a lot of informations and do those kind of things. So we could investigate it, something happened in July and there's not an arrest made until December and of course trial's not so following November or something like that. So it's a, it's a constantly, constantly moving number.
Any other questions for the chief? Okay, moving on. Thank you, chief. Uh, Fire Department, Chief Klosi, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this month, or this week is, uh, Fire Safety Week. We've got, uh, we went to the elementary school on Tuesday, uh, and have the, showed the kindergarteners, one of the fire engines and the sport classes there. We had a couple, a couple of fire cutters come down, pick the engine down. Uh, we've got another date down there tomorrow, um, for the first graders. Normally the first graders come to the fire hall. This year we decided with the COVID and everything, we would just limit the exposure and limit the stuff that we needed to decontaminate and just take the engine down there. And then we've got two gentlemen going to the library tomorrow, uh, reading for the little kids there. Um, we are working with ISO and that is a, every, I believe, 10 years and they go through an audit. The water system, the dispatch system, uh, our training records and our call records. Um, and I've got a meeting with the jury from ISO here, um, I believe, next month. So hopefully we get through, um, with the same, um, rating that we, that we had 10 years ago. We did gain 10 years ago, we dropped it classification, so it saved everybody some money on their bills. Just normal cobbles, gas leaks, stuff like that right now, otherwise, um, nothing, nothing real or shabby right at this point in time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the chief? Good, thank you. Move on. Um, Secretary, Aaron Kidd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do you have before you the bank reconciliation for the number of August 2020? Do I have to review?
Move to approve, second. It's been moved by Dan, seconded by Russ, discussion? Call for the question. Questions we called for to approve the August 2020 bank reconciliation. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Take that as unanimous. Do you have anything else you want to say to them?
Uh, just that we've done our audit process for the year. They're using the Florida Mountain, the facilitator part of it and it's going to be really good. I feel good about it. A lot of you are seeming happy.
So far.
That's right. So, hope you can post it.
Anything else? Good, thank you, Karen. Uh, next item, tree board. I'm here, Phil.
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. Okay, reports of standing committees of the city council, judiciary, Mr. Nami.
Yes, before you have minutes of September 15th.
Move to approve, second. It's been moved by Bill, seconded by Russ, discussion? Call for the question. Questions been called for to approve September 15th, 2020 meeting minutes of the judiciary committee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Take that as unanimous? Anything else you want to say?
Uh, we'll have a meeting the Tuesday before next week, cancel me.
Yep. I think that's the 20th, isn't it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee, Mr. Hand. Before you, you have our verdict tomorrow, last meeting of October 1st, ask your acceptance.
Move to approve, second.
It's been moved by Russ, seconded by Bill, discussion? As you see, we have our adult meetings. I'm going to use approval, that move on to the plaintiffs. Okay, there was a call for the question. All those in favor of approving the October 1st, 2020 meeting minutes of the finance committee, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? They take that as unanimous? Also, mayor's acceptance would like to approve the line item budget report, the fund summary for claims, claims by vendor report and the budget versus actual report all for September of 2020.
Move to approve, second.
That's been moved by Russ, seconded by Dan, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, um, I was wondering, uh, I'm sure that there's an easy explanation, but I'm looking at page one of three on claims by vendor report. At the bottom, it slides off. Um, we have the last entry on claim number 43672. Uh, and I believe that one is the, that one actually correctly is the 1827. But then it's slightly, we have the 4499 and that's not hooked to anything. So how does, does that, is that included in it? I don't know.
I'm not sure what you're asking.
Yeah, I'm honest with you. Which number are you referring, Mayor John?
I'm on the last page and so.
The last page or the first page?
First page, last line. So we know that, I know, I look at these numbers all the time. So I know this number hooks to this. I know this number hooks to this one, 2599. And therefore, 7156, John Deere is 1827. And then we get down here and there's 4499. What does that hook to?
That, I can't, I don't know.
I'm sure there's a.
Janie, you see what we're talking about?
Um, sort of.
On the bottom of page, one of the 4499s not attached to anything? Four is here. Not saying that I'm fully right, but I think it could be another claim from John Deere.
Yeah. Oh, I got you right.
Oh.
Okay, ten claims, okay. So we've got John Deere financial part. There's just two different claims. One probably came in, yeah, you look, one came in the first part of November, September, and the other one came in the first part of October.
Yeah.
But we paid both of them on this one.
On the same check.
On the same check.
Because that's what it does. It pulls in, if you do two claims in the same time period, it pulls them both together into the same check.
Okay, and that check being the 3177.
Correct.
Okay, great, thanks. That makes it more understandable. Thank you.
There's no other questions, then, Mr. Phil? Do I have to vote on it? No. And I'm thinking since. Call for the question. Questions been called for to approve the line item budget report for September 2020, the fund summary for claims for September 2020, the claims by vendor report for September 2020 and the budget versus actual report for September 2020. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? They take it as unanimous? And now you're concluding your report, is your, okay, thank you. Next, I need who is the fire order committee, Mr. Shaker.
Right, in the fact that I have the meeting for September 21st, I ask for your approval.
Move to approve, second.
It's been moved by Dan, seconded by Russ, discussion? And this is just the first one, right? Okay? Call for the question. Questions been called for to approve the September 21st, 2020 meeting minutes of the fire order committee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? They take it as unanimous?
Then I need your approval for September 24th, 2020?
So move, second.
It's been moved by Dan, I think, seconded by Russ, discussion? Call for the question. Questions been called for to approve the September 24th, 2020 meeting minutes of the fire order committee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? They take it as unanimous?
I got one action item to approve amendment to council rules of procedure.
Move to approve, second.
It's been moved by Dan, seconded by Russ, discussion?
I, I got two items here I'd like to add to this. Under, um, such, under item A, item number one, starts with the word revoked attendance. Uh, once again, by who? Who's been invoked and who's going to sunset? I don't see where that's specified here.
I think with Congress, there was a law to actually call an emergency, which would be the mayor, the governor and the residents. Would be the three people who would actually be able to declare an emergency. Or I guess the county commissioner should declare an emergency too.
Uh, the council could declare, right.
So I guess whichever body declared the emergency, not anybody could just declare an emergency.
Okay, I was wondering, we shouldn't specify who can call it because if there's a hurricane down in Louisiana, doesn't that send a making emergency for us up here and interrupt our operations? Although, I mean, you may call that an emergency. That's why I'm.
Correct.
That's why I'm saying, maybe we should kind of state who gets to call, who gets to sunset.
So you would like to add, uh, mayor, governor, or mayor commissioners, uh, governor and president?
Maybe we should clarify by saying emergency in our area. So however there is a, an emergency has to be put here, it has to be here, not an emergency somewhere else.
Emergency within the city of Dillon.
Correct.
Well, what happens if we have, uh, if we have a huge fire? What happens if we have a jet that, uh, hits, uh, some silos that are just right out of town? We have grain silos that sit right outside the city limits. I mean, I think that there could be an emergency that isn't within the city limits.
I can leave it to the city. I said within the city, but I don't know how to change that. But concerns the city. Well, and actually, we could leave it that way because if there's a grain level of emergency explode right outside the city, the city of Dillon would have an emergency inside the city limits.
That happens to be out of 9/11. Uh, I mean, I think that when, when there's an emergency designation, whether it's by the President of the United States, the Governor, the Mayor, uh, you should pay attention to that.
There's always an emergency someplace in the United States. Whether the President is calling an emergency in California because of the fires, declaring that an emergency situation, that is no reason for the city of Dillon to become an emergency situation. I think this should consider something that truly is endangering the city of Dillon. Again, if the elevator is just outside the city of Dillon explodes, that would definitely be an emergency inside the city, given all the actual disaster happened outside the city. At that time, the mayor would say, we have an emergency.
And probably the commissioners as well. And possibly the governor.
And the governor, yeah.
You know, if it's a federal plane that goes down, said they're going to be right there. They were right here.
I mean, if we have a pandemic, the governor will declare an emergency.
Correct.
But that's something that the mayor can minimize as well. The idea here is saying this is local control, this is local people. Let's put this in there.
So what I'm, I'm trying very hard to understand in reading this, and I read it many times today, Mr. Ham, is that this, we want to write good policy. And good policy, number one, is very, very clear on what situations trigger that policy. So we need to be very clear on that. And number two, it needs to be, in one sense, we're saying it has to be very clear on what the situations are, and yet it needs to be broad in terms of being flexible. Being flexible to meet all kinds of different needs. That, those are, those are factors that are inherent in good policy. Local control is not a factor in good policy. I think Mr. Graham has pointed out what the, what, at least when this was brought up, what your goals were. Your goals were that city council people attend meetings whenever possible, right?
Correct.
So that's the goal here. And then to set off some very narrow exceptions of when it would be okay to electronically zoom into a meeting.
And on the definition of emergency, it's all laid out in state codes, laid out in our ordinance too. If the mayor declares an emergency in Dillon, you just don't remember, it's either three miles or five miles outside the town. I can grab people off the street and say, you come with me, we did some work done. That's a temporary, like the way it should have been with the governor. He should have been temporary until the legislature gets together and declares an emergency, which they didn't. So who had reached the law says, but. Emergency was declared, then if you guys noticed, I put it in form, well, to the gym's hell. The resolution of the council declares emergency, because mine is only temporary. Mine is, like, if a silo blew up, that day when it blew up, we got to get things done and handled. But if it kept going over a couple more days, then I'd get the council to declare emergency at the same time. Or not, well, you know, declare it at that point, you know, because it went longer than a couple days. But I think it's all laid out pretty much on what the emergency is and who gets to call one. So we have to street cannot declare an emergency.
The, one thing, in sitting on the judiciary committee, we've gone through title after title, replacing the word should and shall with must. And so in the sentence that says, it's the first sentence that goes on, so it's the third line of the first sentence, and it says, attending in person, then the subject matter should pertain to the stated emergency. If we are going to continue on with our, the way we write these kinds of policies, it would be must.
I would agree with that. It should change to must. See, and I guess I would like to have your little discussion right here is exactly how this would work. For instance, a grain elevator blows up outside the city of Dillon. There's an emergency exists. The mayor calls an emergency. We have to have a city council meeting. Not everybody is available to come to the city council meeting because they are at work. Whatever, they can't break away and get there at that time. Everybody then would be allowed to use Zoom in an emergency to discuss what we are going to do about this emergency that existed, the silo blew up. If the silo blows up, and by the time we get together, the silo fire is out and there is no emergency, there is no reason why we can't wait until the next day for everybody to come down there and meet. The only reason we should be discussing things on Zoom is to discuss that emergency, what we need to do to take care of that emergency. And that actually, and I didn't bring my guidelines with me, if you read the Attorney General's guidelines on there, one of the guidelines he says, if you're going to do Zoom, you should cancel all non-essential meetings. And to me, the only essential meeting during a pandemic or any other emergency is to discuss that emergency. The only thing the city of Dillon needs to do during an emergency is meet to pay the bills, to make sure the budget's passed. Those are the only two things we've done this year that was truly an emergency, an essential item we had to do. The city of Dillon will basically run on its own without the city council here telling them every day what to do. We have to be here to approve the budget, we have to be here to spend the money. We don't have to come in and have any special meetings like the meeting we're talking about, the Sony meeting. That is not an essential meeting to keep the city of Dillon open. What's essential to keep the city of Dillon open is to be discussing the emergency. And frankly, there's nothing the city council can do about a pandemic. So there would be no reason for us to have a meeting to discuss this emergency. Only other essential meetings the city of Dillon should be having, if you want to be a particular one, is going to be budget meetings so we can pay the bills. Everything else is technically non-essential. It does not pertain to keep the city of Dillon running. The employees are going to go to work, the employees are going to get paid, the police are going to go to work, the police are going to get paid. The city council needs to meet and make sure that happens. Everything else really can wait until we can have a meeting here in person and discuss it in person, and the public can discuss it in person, as is intended. Now Zoom should always be made available to the public. Now, there's a, there's been some statements going around that we're trying to shut Zoom off to the public. That is not the intention of this ordinance. This ordinance is only to make sure the city council follows the laws that we have in our books. And this pandemic brought up a flaw we have in our law, and that is our rules do not allow at the present time for city councils to use Zoom. The only time Zoom should be used is if an emergency situation, and that's what we're trying to remedy with this new rule, is to make it possible, because without this rule, Zoom is not allowed by the city of Dillon charter or certainties. So contrary to what people are saying, we are not trying to pass this to, we are actually trying to pass this to make it legal to use Zoom in certain instances. Because right now, there is no legal instance to use Zoom. And if you go by the Attorney General's letter of advice, he says, do not use it unless you have an essential meeting, cancel all non-essential meetings. So if you wanted to go by that, what we're doing in here tonight is not essential. It's not doing anything to keep the government really running. And that's what this is meant to do. And I think by what we discussed, this will do that clear with a couple of modifications. We need to be more direct on approving issues of emergency. And definitely change it from should to must. Because that's the only thing an essential meeting in a pandemic is, is discuss the emergency.
Mr. Mayor, I, as much as I, and I really do appreciate Raymond's thoughts, his thoughts and feelings about what is essential and what isn't essential. And it's all based on priorities. I have different thoughts about what is essential. But nevertheless, we're trying to write, and we want to make sure that this policy is not, it does not look or even, even smell of being vindictive or personal to someone. I've gotten three phone calls today about that. And so we need to be really careful about that. I think that we are in a health emergency right now. And, and it's taken a great toll on our culture and our society. And we need to be a little bit, a little bit, I think we need to be a little bit kinder to people and a little bit more understanding, and a little bit more open to ways of attending our meetings for people with health risks. I, I am confused when I get down to number two and ABC. It gets real mushy in there. And I really hope that we'll send this back, or even send it to judiciary to let them have a swing at this, this policy.
Oh, what's mushy with A?
Pardon?
What's mushy with A?
Okay, let's just start back with number two, the procedures and guidelines. If a member wishes to participate in council or committee meetings agenda items remotely, the council member should notify the mayor of his intent and to, and his wish to attend remotely. If that is not possible, the council member may notify the mayor, not later, later than, the business date prior to the council or the committee meeting, which the council member wishes to attend remotely. With less notice, it may not be possible to make the necessary arrangements to allow remote attendance. I think that you just say, you know, if a, if a member has, wishes to attend remotely, he will notify the city of his wish, period.
And who's the city?
Huh?
Who's the city?
Who's ever going to, right now, you kind of are taking care of. We need to write this so it applies to not just you, Mayor Platten, but to the next mayor and to the mayor after that. So whoever is going to, who's assigned to kind of tech the city council, that's who you let know that, that I need to attend remotely because of a pandemic and I have a medical issue.
And that would be the mayor.
Right now, it's the mayor. Maybe the next administration, it might be somebody else.
The next administration too.
It would always be the mayor.
It's always be the mayor. How about the mayor or is designated? In case I'm out of town, somebody else will be in the position.
Yeah, that's all set out in my authority, if you're my cap.
Yeah, my mayor is not available.
The president, the president is not available. The city council would have to meet somebody.
Choose their.
But if it gets that bad, we got an emergency and we're losing that many people. I don't know if we're going to get together with Zoom or we're all going to get together with emergency meetings and say, let's play, what to do, and decide what we're going to do. I mean, you know, and we're getting kind of really far a question now for some of that.
Well, I tell you, I mean, I agree with you, and I think that we are walking out hearing the needs and.
I must say, if the council member wishes to participate in council or committee meeting agenda items remotely, the council member should notify the mayor within 12 hours of the scheduled meeting. Well, period, of which I wish to attend remotely. So just add Dan and get rid of the rest of the lines.
I think we ought to get rid of the committee meeting because realistically, we're not going to have an emergency meeting in a committee to discuss an emergency that's happening at the city. If we have a true emergency in the city of Dillon and the council needs to meet to decide what to do about that, we're not going to go to committee first, we want to deal with it at the council.
The truth is true.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Whenever you're ready for me, would you please let me know?
If you're ready, jump in.
Okay, with your indulgence, just, just the statement. I continue to claim under the Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, as a reasonable accommodation, my ability to use Zoom to attend city council meetings and meetings of committees. Secondly, because I have a reasonable probability of being in a conflict of interest, I recuse myself from the vote on this, changing the rules and the discussion, with the exception of the following observations. As you said.
Let me ask a question of the attorney, just a second, please. Can he declare that he's recusing, but then he still wants to do a statement? Is that allowed? I don't know why not. Okay, thank you. Proceed, excuse me.
Okay, I'd appreciate it if this wasn't going to go on for very long, Mayor, but I'd appreciate it if I could be uninterrupted for a change. So the observations are these, Mr. Mayor. I am sitting in a hotel room in Missoula after a long medical day, starting at 4:00 AM. Trying to keep my leg straight. I made the extraordinary effort of using Zoom to attend this meeting. Were it not for Zoom, I would not be able to attend the meeting. I would not be able to vote the interests of my constituents. So any, any comparison of that effort to the content of this proposed rules change, I invite. Also, again, I find it perplexing at best that on a day in which during this pandemic, that the state has set a new daily record of new cases, that Beaverhead County has set a new daily record of cases, that three additional people in the state have died of the virus, that hospitalizations continue to go up. I find it perplexing at best that the city council would consider these rules changes. And I will turn it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or discussion?
Mr. Mayor, on item 5A, the third sentence down, has the word access, A-C-C-E-S-S. I believe that's how it's placed, please be sure. Under 5A.
Okay, correct, I believe that's correct.
Give it the access.
It doesn't make sense. That's the extent of my knowledge, Mr. Mayor.
And there was a discussion, I don't know where it went, to get rid of the committee or not get rid of the committee?
I don't.
Didn't understand what the outcome was on there.
I would make a motion to remove the committee as an option for Zoom because, again, if we truly have an emergency and we're having an emergency meeting and discussing an emergency, we're not going to be going to be a committee, we're going to be going to be a council. If it's, if it's not an emergency and you want to run it through the council, committees and all that stuff, it truly is an emergency. As you know how long it takes me to get the committee back to the council. Whatever that is, there can't be much of an emergency if we're running it.
if we're running it through a committee first.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There's discussion now for that motion.
So, if I understand correctly, uh, you are not, uh, you do not understand that, that we have a statewide health emergency at the present time?
I do understand. I was at the courthouse the other day with board of health. I walked in the door. There's a big thing that said mask up there. You walk in the door, all the people running around there without masks. Did the hospital last, whatever the day it was for procedure?
And everybody had a mask on.
No, they were not. I walked in the front door. They had a mask. You walk over there. Once you got back in the procedure room, you look around, nurses are running around without masks, doctors are running around without masks. So it can't be that truly big of an emergency if nobody, if blood makes the rules or follows the damn rules.
Uh, I will, I will let the CEO know that that was your experience at the hospital.
It's not mine alone.
So, so, so will I, Mayor Joe?
I, um, we are truly in a health emergency at the present time.
I see doctors and nurses every day in safe places, um, Murdochs, any business in Dillon running around without masks. Every day.
I agree with you. I, I agree. Dillon is a, Dillon is a rogue city in a civilized world. You know, I agree with you.
But where I'm coming from is it's being said that we really do try to pick on people and that. I don't know what else to do. I'm with all you. We're discussing a lot of people have Zoom. That's what this whole thing was about. Before, nobody was allowed to do Zoom except public, no council.
And it's still that way.
And it's still that way until this passes, that we are not allowed to do Zoom.
At statewide.
And the, and the Attorney General did not allow us to do Zoom for council meetings. Only when we had the lockdown. This lockdown order followed the governor's. As soon as the governor went to face one, that law would win away. And it wasn't even really an order to the Attorney General, who was the only one that could really let the law go for open meetings. This is an open meeting thing. Now, we're just trying to work with people on that. That's why this whole thing here is about. But like for committees, you know, the last committees I've had, we've had six people in here. One had seven, which is below the 10, actually it's 50 by the governor, if you can make safe distancing. We can't. So it's 10 with masks. We have less than 10. So it met his criteria on that.
We just need to somehow work our, our verbiage so that we include, uh, people who have, uh, there's a healthcare emergency in our state. Um, there are people who will have ongoing issues around that healthcare emergency. And we need to write this broadly enough so that it includes those people, uh, Mayor. It is, we need to be, uh, kinder and gentler at this point in our history.
Okay. I see Mike standing through all the time. It's like Mike speaking.
I'm sorry. I, I brought this up. It's pretty funny. There's many meetings that have occurred because this occurred tonight. Uh, we could do something essential tonight, which is, uh, confirm the hiring of police officers.
Correct.
Is there any provisions, and I think you get a chance to read over this with this in mind, is there any provisions for a meeting of police commission? Or is there something within state law that would allow the mayor to appoint new officers? We've got to bid, we have a number of officers at the sidelines, but pandemic, any provisions for that?
I think there are, it's in state law.
I, and I don't know, but to answer, I do not know that. I mean, I, I appoint the officers right now, but I do not know if, how much effect that carries if we're in an emergency, a pandemic or whatever, what power I have at that point. I can declare an emergency. I'm not sure I have much more power. I'd have to talk to legal authorities on that. Not that I'm trying to at least take any power from anybody. A lot of times I really don't know what I have.
And you think maybe it's possible he could act without a police commission in that situation?
I don't know. Cause it's split, it's very explicit in the, our ordinance and some in state code that we gotta have a police commission to recommend to the mayor. So I'm not sure. I would say, and I'm not saying I'm knowing this for sure, but my point would be probably not. I would still have to have a police commission to meet.
I might add something to that though. This ordinance only deals with elected officials. It only deals with the city council people. It does not deal with appointed people, employees or anybody else, boards. They make up their own rules on what they want to do. The only people this concerns with, and then again, as I have kept stating, this goes back to the constitutional right. The people have the right to observe. You cannot observe your council person, what he's doing on Zoom. Period. I mean, a good example, and I never thought about it, we were brought up a couple meetings ago, is what happened over in Missoula County, when all the city council people were sitting down there and they were texting each other back along the desk. If they were doing that at a Zoom meeting, nobody would have ever caught them. I think it's very essential, and I've said this, and I've been saying this, this isn't something that's just been this year. I've been saying this for the last 10 years. It's very essential that elected people are down there doing their job. They're here in the public view. So if someone wants to come in and cuss you off for doing something, they have the right to do it. And they have the right to know they have your attention while they're doing it. Quite frankly, I can sit on Zoom and be sitting over here playing with the phone and you'd never know what I was doing. I could mute if you're not doing that and be watching TV over the top of the Zoom. That's not the public's ability to observe. Now, the public has the right and that letter of advice from the Attorney General dealt more with the public than it did with the city council. It advised the city council, the city governments, to do whatever it takes it makes necessary to make it possible for the public to observe and participate in meetings. It said very little about city council elected officials. Most everything in that letter contained what the public's right, not the city council's right. And again, it's our duty. We, we, we run through office. When we didn't come down and willy-nilly we made a decision to run through office, some of us actually had to go report to keep our offices. This is something that we did because we wanted to. We took an oath when we got our seat that we would take, I get kind of emotional about this because this is something very, this, this is near and dear to, this is our right, our, our, it's an honor, it's a privilege we get to sit down here and represent the people in the city of Dillon. Everybody else, and I've said this at the last meeting, we've got students going to school, we've got school teachers teaching school, we've got every city employee, police officer working. The only people who don't want to show up here and do their damn job is elected officials. And if Mr. Russell wants to think I'm talking about him personal, I'm sorry. But that's what I feel.
Would you look at, would you look at me for a moment? Mr. Graham, you are a coward.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, may I interject here? Is it possible just for the next, uh, we could even put this on the schedule to re, come back and retake a look at this next November, but just for the next year, to interject, uh, on addendum A, number one, and I'm going to the third line down, and it says we're attending in person, and then the subject matter must pertain to the stated emergency and/or regular city businesses, business for extended emergencies not to exceed one year. And to just live with something a little bit looser like this for one year and then revisit.
Well, let's go, let's go back. We have another motion out there. Unless that's a motion to table the whole thing, is...
What do you think?
Well, I would say we have a motion to remove everything that says committee. That's what the motion, or whoever it says, uh, council or committee meeting. We'll get rid of or committee and leave council meeting. That's what the, that's what the discussion's supposed to be about. Kind of digress, you know? And it's probably good at this point that there was being used Zoom by the last thing that was made. Otherwise, the policeman in here might be, or this person, you might have been. But, side note, but okay, there's a motion, there's a motion on table.
Okay, I, I'm going to move to table, uh, this discussion.
Is there a second?
I'm on a second motion, but be advised, if we don't pass this, city councilman cannot use Zoom to vote. That's already in the ordinance. If we don't pass something, the ordinance says you do not use Zoom to vote.
I'm not sure. It's in the ordinance. Well, it's in the procedure. It was a procedure. Is that just part of it to voting or attending?
Oh, I think you can always attend because if you attend and not vote, you're a citizen.
Well, if you, if you attend to me, you're attending as a council member unless it is a committee. And I'm assuming when you said the table, the tabling was to table the vote on committee? Or is it to table a whole issue?
What I'm attempting to do, Mr. Mayor, is it, it resembles, uh, person, it resembles something that's being done personally and possibly, and, and I know, uh, Mr. Graham does not want it to have that appearance.
This has never, ever had anything to do with Mr. Russell. Mr. Russell has interjected himself in this, but it has not a thing that...
You have mentioned my name, not me. You've done it repeatedly. It's on tape.
See, what I'm saying is that it, it, uh, is taking on a flavor of vindictiveness and I don't, and, and I know that that's not what your goal is, Raymond. Uh, and so my idea for tabling it is just to go back and possibly to tighten up the language a little bit or maybe come up with some language that will work for 12 months and then revisit it.
So let's, let's tighten up the motion. Motion as the table until, and present it to the judicial.
Judiciary, what is it, committee?
Is that what it is, the motion?
That's, that's my motion. Sounds good, Mayor.
I'm not. I'm just trying to keep going. It's almost nine again.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm looking for a second. Second call for a second.
I'll second it for discussion, but you already have a motion on the floor. You can't motion a motion. That's what caused the question on the first one. Get the two thirds, get that killed. Then entertain a new motion. Robert's rules, please.
Okay, and that's what I was asking for clarification. I wasn't sure, can you table, you can table the motion that's on the table, but can you table a prior motion without getting rid of that one motion? I think you gotta get rid of it. Okay, so the motion on the table, unless you're going to table the committee question, is you either vote on that or you table that?
Question on the committee, is that overlapped into boards? Because if that's the case, city county health board.
I think it is not. It's only council, our committee.
Which is a committee representative.
Right, but I believe like Mr. Graham said, it's like zoning. There's two council on zoning. There's two council on planning. Those set up their own with the rules for, for Zoom and that. This is only committee, council committees. Okay. You know, so the nine committees that you guys have, it would be those. That's what the vote would be on. Is that correct? Everybody agrees that's what the vote was? Or it was, not was.
So where would the, where would the corrections be in the addendum A? Could we have those read to us?
Everywhere it says council or committee meeting, make it say council meeting. So I can tell you, right, the second line on the first page is one, and I'm just going down, uh, the, under addendum A, first underline, there's one second line there is that. Uh, then also on number two, uh, third, fourth line down, now there's another one there. And I'm not saying I'm catching them all. I'm trying to catch them for everybody. Number four, first line, there's another one there. Um, 5A at the end, that paragraph. And that's all I can see. Those would be the ones that would be changed if this vote went affirmative.
So effectively what this does is knock out zooming for any committee meetings, correct?
For council.
For council members.
We can still have public Zoom, quite public. This, none of this affects public.
So that this, the effect of this motion is to deny Zoom, the Zoom option for all committee meetings for council members?
Well, that's what the motion on the table.
Correct. This is set up for an emergency situation. Committees wouldn't be an emergency. Board of Health would be.
Uh, that's not a real emergency.
We have extended emergencies.
Right, right.
What if we have extended emergencies that go over, uh, not just one year, but two years? Uh, all committees are going to be meeting. We'll just do it differently. Um, we're in a, a health emergency right now and, and there is a very good likelihood that it will extend beyond one year. Uh, I'm not sure how you write things for that and I'm willing to write them for winter now, but, uh, but I mean, there is, uh, this isn't going to be our first emergency that, that is an extended emergency.
Chances are this will be the last one you'll see, at least in Dillon.
Well?
Well, and again, it goes back to the true emergency. We are doing everything right now per the ADA, per...
CDC.
CDC guidelines. If it's a true emergency and we can...
Where, you're doing everything with CDC. You're not, Raymond, look at you. You don't have a mask on. You're not social distance. You're not doing things to CDC guidelines.
I have a health condition that concludes me for an amount. It's against ADA law. If you do, you can bring it up and ask me that, Mary Jill.
I, and that's great, but don't say that you're doing that. You're not...
We are doing everything, we are doing everything the CDC says we need to do to have a meeting.
You're not six feet from Bill.
That is factually incorrect.
I believe you wandered off in this company.
I called my husband off on what we were discussing. Well, I guess I'm going to say this, then. If we can't have a legal meeting right now, I move to adjourn this meeting then. Because if we can't have a meeting following somebody's guideline legally, then we should not be in the meeting.
Your second to adjourn. Second call to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Raymond, seconded by Russ to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournments say aye.
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 All those opposed of adjournments say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Catch here, I take Bill, Dan, Russ and Don is the majority, so we are not adjourned. Now we're back to the motion on the table about a committee.
Clarification. Rich.
Rich, yeah, Rich seconded and I voted nay. Rich, yeah, Rich seconded, and I voted nay.
Right, and--
You voted nay, I didn't hear you. I'm second.
No, Rich did.
Did I say Russ?
I meant, I'm sorry.
Rich, please correct.
I'm sorry, I'm, it is correct, it's Rich that seconded. One, two, three, four, four, to not adjourn, three to adjourn.
No, one, two, three, four, five, it voted nay.
Well, you said, you said-- Okay, nay, okay, so there's five.
My motion was to adjourn, because we didn't want to adjourn, but realistically, if we can't have a meeting like we're having right now, then we can't have a meeting period. Because this is not an essential meeting, I don't care what anybody wants to say. Now, we did do, we did do something that we needed to do, and that was appoint a policeman. We did do that, but--
And that was hate bills.
That was not life threatening, if we did not appoint a policeman today. I mean, yes, the police would be down one man. But they've been one, down one man for how long?
So I withdraw my motion to table, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, that was off anyway.
Aren't we, we're on the one to remove committee, aren't we?
Yep.
You wanna do--
I'm waiting for a call for questions.
I called for questions already.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Call for the questions.
There it is.
Okay, all those in favor of removing or changing the statement to from council or committee meetings, and making it say council meetings, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And Richard's abstained.
Recuse.
Abstained or recused, whichever. Mary Jo, nay, right?
Correct, yes.
And I'm taking the rest of them with affirmative, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, those items are removed. Now we fall back to the original motion to approve this here as amended. There's a few changes, and the big one was council or committee members. Or, council or committee meetings.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have an addition also to the, uh, proposed verbiage. It would be to add the words, uh, and I'm at the, on the addendum A, number one, third line. And we have changed it from should to must, so it would be must pertain to the stated emergency and/or regular city business for extended emergencies, not to exceed one year.
Second.
Remove, but Mary Jo, second, but Russ, we still need this.
And I--
It's an or regular city business or extended emergency.
For extended emergencies, comma, not to exceed one year, period. And then we go into the last sentence, under number one, emergency situations, et cetera.
Right. Okay, any discussion? You want me to read, Jim?
Yeah, I'd like to jump in here just for a minute. The whole endeavor of coming up with the rules of procedure was because, uh, the current rules didn't reflect state law. So I'm gonna read it, 'cause I know I read it at the committee meeting. And that is that, uh, "Meeting means the convening of a quorum of the constituent membership of a public agency or association to the Dillon City Council, with the, whether corporal or by means of electronic equipment, to here discuss or act upon a matter over which the agency has supervision, control, jurisdiction, or advisory power." So, my point in reading that statute is that the state law authorizes the use of electronic equipment. However, state law also mandates, and the constitution mandates, the right to observe and to participate. And so, if you use electronic equipment, you have to make any effort to ensure that the right of observation and the right of participation are, are, are on. Now, yeah, again, I wrote this up, it's a draft, obviously, it's gonna be picked apart. I have no problem with that, that's how you make the legislation, or in this case, policy, because that's what this is, this is a resolution, verbatim. Again, I guess my concern is that if you eliminate committee meetings, which are meetings of public agencies, I don't know that you can take away rights that state laws already conferred. In other words, I didn't know where the vote was gonna go tonight, or where the discussion's gonna go tonight. That's why I feel it's incumbent upon me now to jump in, to say, I don't know, but that's a wise move, nay, because state law authorizes meetings of public bodies by electronic equipment. So I have to jump in there and say that. That's all I have.
Is that a state law, or is that in the definitions?
That's state law.
I thought that was in the definition in state law.
It is a statute, Raymond. That's what the statute says.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
May I ask you for the citation on that, please?
Well, well, you may, I think I had given it to you before the committee meeting, but I'll do it again.
Oh, is it the same, is it the same one as you gave me at--
Yeah, yes, sir, it's two, three, two oh two.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yep.
Now, I'm gonna throw in a little thing. It's, is it a must or a may? I'm just trying to make sure we're crossing the i's, dot, dot, now I've crossed it.
A must use electronic equipment or a may?
May.
I would say it's a may.
So if the council saw these, they don't have to use electronic equipment?
I'm just saying it's authorized.
It is authorized, and I--
That's what I need to point out.
Yeah.
But I also like to point out what I pointed out there. Today, to this date, every time an electronic meeting is went to court, it's been ruled an illegal meeting. Is that not correct? Has there been any authorized use of electronic meeting that the newspaper has sued over and lost?
Uh, well, I don't know about this newspaper, but I'm sure--
Well, I'm not, I mean, newspaper in general, because all of my reading is because they got together by means of corporal meetings, or either telephones or electronic communications illegally.
Uh, well, I did look into that, unfortunately, my file is elsewhere. Uh, but I, I would not say it's a correct statement that the Supreme Court always said that electronic meetings have often violated, uh, the, uh, the right of participation and observation. Uh, as long as the Supreme Court is satisfied that there were, that was a meaningful, actually, notice, an opportunity to be heard and participate, they haven't found that the meeting violated this, this--
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, yes, sir.
Uh, are you aware of what the, uh, remote meeting sub choice is with the United States Congress, uh, the US House of Representatives, and the Senate, uh, specifically Zoom?
Uh, I'm not sure, but my rudimentary knowledge is that they can pretty much do what they want, consider their own rules.
Well, according to their current rules, uh, they are both allowing remote participation by Zoom. The US Supreme Court, if you know, has allowed remote participation by justices in certain instances. Um, and I just wanted to point that out since we were discussing law.
And they set their own rules, our rules are set by the state, you know, on that. Plus, it's not always all of them, because I think we're talking about, at least Democrats are saying that they don't want the, uh, committee meeting to be held by Zoom. That hearing. So not all of them are gonna be held. So up to wherever they want, is what I'm trying to say.
Last I heard, it was the Donnybrook Open House. I think Mr. Reagan had--
Yes, sorry.
Yeah, I think those meetings, I mean, I've covered all the cases, but they were legal, not because they were held by Zoom, they were legal because there was not a chance for the public to participate. Then council won't be adhered, so it's kind of inverting hierarchy.
Would you like me to read my, uh--
We have your motion in front, and you have a second. I agree, it's right after the end, number one, under addendum A, end of the third line, and/or regular city business, or for extended emergencies, not to exceed one year.
Uh, well, I think almost there was just one word that was off. Uh, for, uh, must pertain to the stated emergency and/or regular city business for extended emergencies, comma, not to exceed one year. And, and the intent here is to, uh, meld this over for one year, get us through for one year, let us think about it, let it percolate, and then come back to this and possibly, uh, see if we wanna change it.
Oh, so your motion is to allow this to be done for one year from this vote?
Uh, that's not part of my motion, uh, my motion--
Because the way that read to me is it was a one year for the emergency, and after one year, the emergency's gone.
That's, that's true. What I said, my intention for this motion is to get us through a year, or 15 months, or 18 months, and then come back and relook at this--
For the year of reup in January.
Uh, and you look at it--
The year of the declared emergency.
No, they declared it in March.
In March? Would that more--
Barry, could you have been, or asked her, yeah, see if you could use the microphone?
I'm not gonna be able to hear it, sorry.
I know, I'm sorry, Diane, I know this mask is dreadful, uh, for being able to enunciate clearly. The intention is to get us through for, uh, 12 to 14 months, and let this percolate in our heads, and come back to it with, uh, you know, after we've lived through this pandemic for a year or 14 months, and maybe come back and be able to write policy that's a little, uh, that is more, that will meet our goals, uh, more firmly.
Excuse me, but can't we come in and redo this at any time?
Sure.
So, why do we need to put a time limit?
We are putting a time limit, that was just my intention.
12, 14, or 15 months later, we could look at it again. We can look at it at any time.
Right, and, and, and somebody else might have an intention to come back and look at this in six months, and that would be great, too.
You guys wanna do that, or do you wanna send it to judicial? Right now, that's looking like those are the two options. I'm not telling you, you guys are voting on them. I moved that we just-- Oh, we have another, we have a motion on, but you table it to judicial, that's what I was gonna move you to.
Raymond, we've gotta get our act together.
It's, uh, nine o'clock, and I can see tempers are starting to flare. Did you make the motion to table it to judicial?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Don't we already have a motion in the board?
That's right. Yeah, the table trumps a motion, and the motion was--
Well, the motion was table.
To men--
The motion to table gives judicial.
Whoever voted wants to table it, and we voted nay.
No, we didn't, I, we drew my motion.
To adjourn.
Right, you did table, tried to table for adjourn, you guys said nay. But, we have a motion, is there a second?
Let's follow the question on there first.
I was gonna, I was gonna second your motion, Raymond.
Was there any further discussion?
Which I think I can't do--
Follow up question. Question's been called for to change item under addendum A, item number one, third sentence at the end, but and/or regular city business for extended emergencies, not to exceed one year. All those in favor of that change, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Recuse.
Nay. Okay, that one, I didn't catch everybody. I heard Ray was a nay, and Rich was a recuse. And I heard a nay, then, oh, Dan had a nay. But the rest of them was ayes, right? Aye, Dan was an aye, and Ross was an aye. Okay. The motion passes. It was, uh, recuse actually comes out to me just like a nay, it's counted as a no, because it's really--
Please, please record it as, as--
It will be recorded as a recuse. But, so it's really four ayes, three nays, but it passes. You need four to pass on the council. So, that's been changed. So now we're back to the original motion to accept the rules of procedure as amended.
And is there a motion on the table to approve?
To, yeah, to approve this as amended, there's a motion already. Is there any further motions, discussion to go on with this?
Yes. Mr. Dillon, with the comment you made regarding committee meetings, and we moved to strike it, do we not have to reinstall that? Or does simply state law trump our negative by removing it?
I would say, yeah, state law trumps the negative, but, you know, you, you all can do what you want to do, but I'm just saying, it doesn't seem reasonable to read that statute to authorize that, and then to, and then for the city council to give less, less power than what state law authorizes. That's, that's all I'm saying.
Correct.
I, I agree with you.
So is there a mo, I think?
Oh, now we're getting in the part where I don't really do that.
One of the ones that voted for that, do they wanna pull it? And I'm trying to see--
I'm the only one--
Mary Jo, yeah, so any of the other ones, if you wanna pull that statement, you can make a motion to, and then anybody can second, or make a move, a motion to-- Hold the committee vote.
Second.
Raymond, make the motion for us second, and any further discussion on it? This is to put the or committee back in.
Call for the question.
Question's been called for to, I'll just make it simple, to put the committee back in. All those in favor of doing that, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Recuse.
Yep. I take the rest as others. Now we're back to the original motion again, to accept this.
Yes.
But with committees at, well, as amended, committees added, the and/or regular city business order extended, that's been added, a few within the city, Dillon was added, and a couple musts, and so shoulds or shalls.
And access.
Oh, yeah, and access, or is that second page, yep.
Okay, call for the question.
Question's been called for to approve the council amended or changing the council rules of procedure as amended. All those in favor of say, of that, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. I take that as unanimous, so Rich and--
Recuse.
Yep.
Recuse.
Okay. Moving on. Any others, Bill? Please, no.
No.
Health and welfare, Mr. Shaw.
Why, thanks, Mr. Mayor. No meeting, no report, but we will have a meeting October 15th at 4:00. City County Health Board, October 16th at 11:00. Active cases are 59. Irregardless, Governor's Directive, four active cases or more opt to wear a mask out of respect to those of us that have health issues. So it can go to 120. It's simply for active cases or more, wear a mask. Wash your hands, cough in your sleep. Oh, and there's a foot, there's actually a foot right now statewide that's going to come up before the legislation this next year, because I serve at the state level, that looking at doing health boards having more power in play regarding air quality, septic tanks, and water quality. There's legislation that's coming before the state this next year, so it'll be interesting to see where that goes. The only opposition right now is the negative impact that health boards have had because of COVID. So that'll be interesting to see in this next legislation, what the state does with some of that coming forth. And I'll keep you informed. Be healthy, be safe, be respectful. That's my first one for it.
Hey, Russ, why isn't City and County Health meetings getting canceled?
The last meeting, there was really nothing on the agenda, and I think out of respect of 9/11, because it fell on the same day. But the agenda will be coming out. It's already noted on the Facebook as well, the county has. So, I mean, no.
Thank you.
Yeah, because there was stuff that people said was on the agenda, and that was Facebook BS. We had no agenda, so I'm going to just say. But yes, that means great to attend. If you don't want to attend because of COVID, they do have a call-in number, and you can truly call in and listen. The only requirement is that phone must be on mute. You will be told to mute your phone by the county attorney. Mute. It's a little button that has a little thing across it. Mute. Just clarification. Yes, I am a mute person. I use Zoom. I mute very fast, vote, 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 and I'm off. Be respectful of Zoom. The comment question, by raising your hand, waiting in the waiting room until your meeting starts, and by using mute and unmute. It's, I think, a whole new arena of protocol regarding electronic communication. I know, I had three meetings today. I average at least four meetings a week on Zoom. Go-to meetings at least once a month. So, I mean, there is courtesy and protocol in using these electronic things. And I think it's just a matter of everyone else learning how to do it as well. Please, and thank you. Thank you for my report.
Cemetery Committee, meeting over.
Two are the minutes.
Use the mic at home, please.
Before you, are the minutes from the September 23 meeting and the September 30 meeting.
Move for a second.
Good move by Bill, seconded by Dan. Discussion.
Councilwoman of work, would you be agreeable on the minutes dealing with parks tour by bus that it be shown that I attended that in person?
Sure, yes. You were in person, I believe.
Well...
Yeah, but...
It comes down to what you call a meeting, what's... We didn't have a meeting.
The minutes only fill I attended by Zoom.
And you did not have a meeting on the bus.
We only had a meeting when we got back.
When we got back, remember, because otherwise we would have had a recording. We would have had the public following us around, which they could still get, but, you know. So really, technically, that was not a meeting. That was just a fact-finding. And then we came back and you guys discussed what you found. That was the meeting.
Rich, we didn't gavel in until we got back to the City Council.
Most of the minutes by Valium deal with the park. So if you could just show that I was on that, I would appreciate it.
Okay.
Rich, we just had the definition of what a meeting was. What was a meeting? What sort of you got together in the park?
We didn't ever discuss while we were in the bus. We just, I asked the mayor what he was making for dinner, and we discussed whether it all went out.
The kicker was, here's where the whole kicker comes in, and this is why it gets so confusing. I mean, if it would have went, if we did it by phone, that would not have been legal. Because that is not, nobody had a chance to observe. Okay? Somebody wouldn't come on the bus. So we would not be together. We still had a forum. But, and so we had to do it outside where they were with the public following us around all over. So we thought it best is just, let's just ask questions only, no discussion. And then we come back and present what they found. I understand. I do reign it's...
And when we returned and gavelled in, then each person on the committee listed their, what they saw were needs of each park. And it was a very quick meeting, and the minutes are very clear. So, Richard, I would say I would not be agreeable to saying that you were in person at the meeting. You were in person for the bus tour.
Well, I was in person, and I followed the bus and was a participant in the, however you wish to say it, without saying the word meeting.
The outside, we stood outside and we asked questions of the parks director. No, we just asked questions.
Judging information is a meeting. If there was a forum presence, you're asking the park director getting information. That is a damn meeting.
And there's no way we could do Zoom on the bus. I could not do that. So somebody had to been together to do any discussion, just being on the bus.
It was, it was one of the best meetings, and those guys, Rich and the mayor and Bill, all came up with great ideas. We solved the West Side Park situation. It was a damn good meeting.
Kum bah ya. Amen.
A lot of times I wonder why I took this job. As you care.
Call for the question.
I'm not even sure we're around. They were proving the two minutes. And I'm assuming there was no changes besides, and I believe it says on there, the park committee took a tour of the parks. And that was all of them, all of them. So that would be, including you, Rich. And then after that, you had the Zoom. You was on Zoom, so. I believe it says that in there.
Okay.
Well, make it clear that I, however you wish to state it, participated, but I was following in my car. I was not on the bus.
Okay, we'll just say all the parks committee went on a tour. I think it's clear. Let's move on.
Okay, so we have...
Well, no, it's not, Mr. Mayor. It's Zoom that showed that I was not on the bus.
It says you took a tour. Nobody really cares where you got there. You were there when I told you.
Rich, we're gonna throw these offs, Russ. Just be quiet.
It just, you were on the tour, and it says that. You followed us, you know, in a car behind. But then every time you got out, you were there, and that's when we asked, questions were asked. Nick Guechek or myself answered. And then we got on the bus, ordered your car, and we went to the new location. After that, that is when we did the meeting, and you were here Zoom. I believe it says that. So. Now we had a call for the question, right? Let's show us to approve the September 23, 2020 meeting minutes and the September 30, 2020 meeting minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Aye.
Jimmy Rich said nay. The rest said aye. Is that correct, or is... Okay, minutes were passed.
And we have one action item, and that is to, the parks committee has recommended to the city council that a shade shelter... I'm glad we don't have any more S's in there. That a shade shelter be built at J.C. Park. And included in your packet are some schematics. They do include the... If you'll look at the, especially in the financial page, you'll see that it includes engineered building plans from the engineer.
That's your approach.
And it also, the other question last time was a little bit total cost being included in the packet. And that was included in the packet also.
Is there one structure or more than one structure?
Well, there's one structure outside, and then there's four little ones.
That's what I thought inside.
So it's really, it was a mistake. It should have said shade shelter.
Sure, yes.
They're all in the packet, which ones we never discussed.
Yes, thank you.
But it was all of them, and the money for all of that was in here, I believe, and... I heard you, did you second or made the motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, must make motion, Bill seconded. Now discussion.
The plans look considerably better. They look like a whole lot less maintenance than the original set.
Yes.
So I liked it.
And I also like to let, some people have looked at these plans and thought they look maybe like a little bit overbuilding. The parks, friends of the J.C. Park are going to start with the shade shelter. The engineered building, you know, it's a canopy over cement. And from there, they will add as they see fit. They are not going to overbuild. And so this is, this is the most complete outcome that there could be. But it may turn out that they only put up two of the little shade things inside the splash pad. It could be four, but it may be two.
That just depended on how much money they had come in.
Yeah.
And the main reason right now is they want to get the water lines moved and the pad before winter. They may not get the shelter up this winter. I have a question. On these ones for the pool, are they retractable? Because they look like they could be... When we get those high wind gusts, looks like they could be damaged if they aren't retractable. They're warranted to 105 and all of that. And every winter, they will be taken out and restored. So they aren't retractable?
No.
No.
And they're not, they look like, they almost look like they're telescope, but they don't. They're put up and they are stationary.
But they will be removed for the winter.
For the winter.
Any further discussion?
Call for the question.
Question's been called for to approve the recommendation to build a shade shelter at J.C. Park. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. I take that as unanimous.
Thank you.
Any other? That it? Very good. City Health Committee, Mr. Graham.
No meeting, no report.
Street Alley, Mr. Hine.
No meeting, no report.
Water Sur, Mr. Han.
No meeting, our part.
Now, my favorite. Public comment on items of significant public interest not on the agenda and within the jurisdiction of the city.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Dan, seconded by Russ. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Hate to adjourn.
I'm Ron Carroll, owner of Emporium 406, where you'll find unique vintage and contemporary goods. Products like autographed celebrity memorabilia and framed vintage posters. We also have a magic shop, where you'll find the new children's book, Marvelous Marvin's Magical Moment. At Emporium 406, you'll also find a full line of Made in Montana products and home decor. Items such as painted windows, barn wood and tin goods, fleece blankets, designer pillows, jewelry, small furniture, and so much more. Emporium 406 at 23 South Idaho Street, Dylan's premier Made in Montana gift store.